It is 7 o'clock on Thursday, January 12th. This is the regular city council meeting for the city of Albernate held at City Hall. We will go ahead and call this meeting to order. First item on our agenda is to please stand in your pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the name of the Constitution, the Constitution of America.
Thank you. Clerk, if you'll do a roll call for me, please.
Yes, Councilman Trump.
President.
Councilman Boltenberg.
President.
Councilor Schultz.
President.
Councilman West.
President.
Councilman Martin.
President.
Please let the record reflect that we do have a quorum to conduct business tonight. Any modifications to the agenda?
No.
All right, I would seek a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion.
Moved by Myers.
Second.
Seconded by West. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. You have the sheriff's report in your packet. We'll recognize them if they do come in. There were 29 calls for service for the month of December. That is from December 8th through January 12th, and the 43 hours were met. I have seen extra patrol before and after school, which has been nice. I know we highlighted last time the parking problem on Roosevelt, so hopefully they continue to monitor that for us. If you have any questions for the sheriff, go ahead and get those to clerk or we're going to recognize him when he comes up. That brings us to the mayor's report. I'll be brief tonight. The only thing I have is I do want to just recognize that we did have some turnover within the fire department since we last met. So we have two new officers as a result. You'll notice on the agenda, we have a report from our new chief, Ron Hoover, and the assistant chief right now is Craig Tidler. So we've got some experience coming back into the ranks within our fire department. So appreciate all the time that our clerk has put in just to help with the transition and get everything set up, and I appreciate our department for continuing to serve this community relentlessly and passionately, and we appreciate you. So thank you very much. And that is my mayor's report for tonight. I will move on to council reports and start to my left with Councilor Myers.
Nothing to report.
Councilor West.
Nothing.
Councilor Trump.
Nothing.
All right. That brings us to our citizen comments. So we have two types of comments in the city of Albernate. We have those for agenda-related items and non-agenda-related items. If you do wish to speak, we just ask that you state your name and address clearly for the record. If you are on the agenda, this is not your time to speak. So this is public comment, so we will start with public comment for agenda-related items. Hearing none. Non-agenda-related items? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Jean Mayber, 3944 East Otter Road, Albernate. I'm here in the capacity of the president from the Lions Club. We have kind of a fact, this is kind of fact binding, we have funds left over from the trail when we had trail raid money for the trail, and then we also have money left over for the sign that was just put up. We were wondering if, given that money, if we give it to the city with the idea of saying it's to be used for the sign or it's to be used, there's two different funds. For the trail, if that's what the purpose would therefore be with the money that we would give to the city. Do you understand what I'm trying to?
Yep, I absolutely do. So for the trail, I will say, and we'll address it during our clerk's report, we are forming a parks committee because we're going to put a new park out by the new fire station. As part of that, there will be a trail incorporated there, so we can definitely utilize those trail funds. The sign funds...
I was thinking that whole area because we talked about, Lions Club actually talked about trying to beautify and redo landscaping and, you know...
Around the sign.
Around the sign.
Oh, oh, oh.
You know, we want to...
Now I'm following.
Still be called sign.
Yeah. Okay.
Our dilemma is that the money that we have left over and we see was specifically given to us for trail usage or upkeep or sign purchase and upkeep. So that's why we were...
And you're designating a trail out to athletic field?
That's, yes.
Okay, that trail.
But...
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily. There's a fine line there. It was done for trail, and that specifically, that trail area. We have, in the past, fertilized it and, let's see, what else was it?
Oh, the doggy bags.
Doggy do-bags, the little holders and stuff. And we paid for those, but we would gladly not keep that on our books if we could give it to the city with the idea that if you continue a trail up by the fire station around whatever, you could use it for that too, as long as that trail was still up kept.
Sure. Yeah, the trail funds for sure. I do like the idea of cleaning up the landscape around the sign, and would there be a potential there? I'm sure, hopefully not in the near term, there's going to be maintenance on the sign as well, but then we'd have to hold it to fund specifically for that.
And the other thing that was brought up was that eventually that tree that is partially down will probably come down.
It's actually on the agenda for the first night.
Okay. And in that case, maybe a purchase of something to go there instead, evergreen, something that is not as sprawling, I guess.
We were looking at having a permanent tree that we could decorate each year.
Well, we thought that would be a two-fold thing. If we had an evergreen of some size go in there that would grow and you could use it for decoration as well. I mean, there's enough room there, I think, to do. Anyway, that would be entirely up to you if we gave the funds.
Yes, I could validate that we would utilize the funds greatly.
I have to take this back to the club, so it'll be a month before we act on it, if that's... All right.
I would add that this is born out of a desire of a few of our members that those funds do remain true to their original roots, so that's where that's coming from. And it also creates a accounting nightmare for a little volunteer club with a volunteer treasurer where we're already handling separate funds for separate things, so it makes a little bit more sense, especially since the city now owns the sign because someone has to own it to ensure it, and the trail is built on City Rapids, so in essence, we own the trail, et cetera. So that's where it's coming from.
I can't tell you exactly how much. It's not huge, but it would be enough to do some things with that, so.
Oh, that's great. Appreciate it.
Chris, make sure that the minutes reflect, you know, that.
Any other comments on non-agenda-related items? Appreciate it, Jeanie.
Yep, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We move on to written reports, and the first is our fire department report from Chief Hoover, who his first item of duty was to delegate. No, I... He definitely wrote the report, so you do have that in your packet. So you have his report. There's also a log of calls at hours and training along with the minutes from the fire department, the last two fire department meetings. So you've got quite a bit in your packet for reference, and we do have representatives here if there are any questions. Did we file for a grant for AEDs? Have we heard back on that? Was that with St. Luke's possibly?
We did file a grant request for the St. Luke's AEDs. We have not heard anything back.
Do you need more, like, currently?
Replacement, I think. Right? You need to replace because yours are out of date?
Yes. That is correct.
So we need to do something.
Yes. Okay. Any other questions for the ladies? Do you have anything additional for us? All right. With that, we will move on to public works.
I've got a couple additions that are not listed in the, well, sort of. One's listed, the other one isn't. First one is that transformer piece. Ever since we got the welder generator bought, it would be the backup generator for the small lift station, we've been trying to locate some of the parts it takes to make it hook up to the lift station, one of which, if you recall, was a manual transfer switch, which that we bought off of eBay, new old stock, got a $1,000 switch for $125. That was great. For almost two years now, we haven't been able to buy the transformer. We need to go from 480 volt to 240 because they aren't making them new, the whole supply chain thing, they aren't common enough, the electrical supply companies aren't making them. So I had Dan Carson, the electrician, check again, and I didn't expect to get this tonight, so we can't really do anything about it, but they have found a company that will make one at a ridiculous price. They were probably $1,000 before the pandemic. They were 1,500 when they were still listed as available, but no one would say, would give you a, yes, we will actually get it to you. Now this company is saying they will get it to us, but $26.65 is the quote for the transformer. Dan's been looking real regular on eBay and other sources for transformer, and they just aren't coming up, the one we need. They're not, there hasn't been even used ones available. His recommendation to me, because he at this point is feeling like it is not going to get any better anytime soon, and this would be about a 60-day turnaround to get it, at least this company is saying, yes, we will manufacture it, and it's going to take about this long to manufacture. To, the only other issue with it is, they're saying if we go into production on this unit, you're going to own it the day we start building it, no matter what. There's no turning away if we chose to do it. Dan's recommendation is we do buy it because he doesn't see it getting any better anytime soon. Everything that he's been dealing with is getting no better and/or worse. That being said, we can't really take action because it's not on the agenda. But we did save almost $1,000 on the transfer switch, buying new old stock, so if you want to look at it that way, that brings the price of this back down to maybe where it was when we started the project. But in the meantime, we can't back up generate that lift station without this piece, so I guess it's just thrown out there for your consideration, and we'll put it on the agenda next month, and hopefully the deal is, you know, is still available. So anybody have any questions about that?
I don't know if I can ask this educatedly because I don't understand electrical stuff. Is there a different modification we could make?
Tried to go down that route because I asked him if he could basically detune our generator from 480 to 240. He says no. There are, almost, he could not find, I mean, we could take the welder generator and sell it for probably 70% of what we paid for it and buy a just generator for that plant, but as of right now, he can't even find one that puts out 240. They're all 480 volt because generally when you're talking three-phase, it is 480. The only thing I haven't looked into is pulling the pumps out of the lift station and doing a conversion there. We have three-phase two, I guess I could go that route before next meeting too, is see how much it would cost to replace the pumps. They're older than the hills. I guess I could go that route.
It'd be nice to know all the options before we put that much money into a single part.
Yeah, well, like I said, we can't take action now anyway, so yeah, I just thought of that.
Is there one pump for up there?
There's two. Basically a low level, and then if it over, if it's overdue on the one pump, it hits the second pump, so. And it's not very big. I mean, literally, it's a, even though it's got that big power supply, it's literally a glorified sump hole is all it is because it's only pumping from three houses, you know, and it barely runs. I mean, it was, we needed the generator day three of the duration, but it was fine up till then, so it went three days without even needing to run during the duration.
I think in the beginning, that was a such as a sump.
More or less, yeah. Yeah, it's a manhole with two pumps in it.
Changed over to this as an improvement.
Yep, yep. That I could do, I could check out and see if we could stick 480 volt pumps in it, and then we don't need a transformer, then we're set because we have the transfer switch on it, so. But I don't know what those pumps have caused in putting them in either.
Yeah, if these are aged, then maybe that's the answer to pursue that now.
When did you know your cost was?
Generator was 4,000?
Okay.
Yeah, 4,500 maybe. But if you remember when we bought the welder generator, the funny part was the units that just, that don't have the welding feature were as much or more than the one with the welder, but it still doesn't make any difference. As we go back and look at the generators, they're all 480 volt. That's, the call for a three-phase 240 volt generator must be zero, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, okay, I will look into that. Second item, I believe all of you know that my wife is taking a new job starting July 1st, and so that means we will be moving, and I don't really have a timeline yet for when we'll be gone. She has to be there July 1st. As far as my departure goes, it's kind of flexible. I'd say within the next month or so, I'll be looking for jobs, and if, I'll start applying, and I'm not ruling out the fact that if something comes up that I feel like I need to, you know, go after, that I wouldn't exit sooner than that June timeframe. I mean, as of right now, I'd say June 15th would be my departure, depending on what happens, but I can't rule out that it might be a little sooner, so I guess, I think there's an item to discuss, a personnel committee to move forward here. I just kind of wanted to let you all know where I'm at as far as how long I'll be here, and I just want you all to know too that I'll do everything I can to help the transition go smoothly, and would urge to, however the committee shakes out, that, and I know it's going to, it's going to cost more wages, but the sooner you can get somebody to work with me, no matter my departure, the better, not that, you know, I'm going to do everything I can to write SOPs and write everything down, but there's just some things that are so hard to transfer in this position to that next person without having them there with you to kind of visual, et cetera. So I know I had to learn from scratch. I didn't really have anybody showing me around. It really stunk sometimes not having that personal experience to learn how to do, so I just wanted to let everybody know where we're at at this point.
Appreciate that. I appreciate the notice because we do get a chance to pump you for all the information that you're worth, so.
Yeah.
And know that we will.
Yes. And I do want to say also that I've enjoyed every bit of this. There's always been some rocky spots, which is inevitable, but it's been great working for all of you and previous council members too. It's been a great experience, and I have learned a ton and have been trusted to do things as I saw fit in most cases, which I appreciate very much, so thank you for that.
I just have one thing on your report, and we're probably good because it was going to be a spring thing anyway. We are going to look at forming a park committee, so I don't know how much filled dirt is there, but maybe we just hold on to it until we know exactly what our direction is going to be. Probably wasn't going to move until everything thought out anyway, but don't push too hard on trying to find a home for it until we kind of figure out, because depending on how we lay it.
You want a sliding hill?
No.
At least a slip and sliding hill.
At least a slip and sliding hill. All right, very good.
Any questions for Guy?
I told him we could get our rainforet.
That's right.
Yeah, right.
All right, hearing none, we'll move on to city clerk.
I don't really have anything to add to the report, just want to bring notice to February 8th to the 10th. I am going to be in virtual training if we can avoid coming into the office during that time. That is very close to the next council meeting as well, so just keep in mind. The good news with all this is I've already done the fill-out for my courses for the next fall, and it looks like I should have my certification sometime next summer, so we're moving straight through that.
On top of your everyday jobs, so.
Let's add snowplow.
And, snowplow. Any questions for Chris? I would like to strike from the record that he asked for more snowplow because that's a... All right, just briefly, we'll touch on the treasurer's report. Do you have anything to add there, Chris? Did you do it all?
I do not.
Any questions on the treasurer's report? All right, hearing none, we move on to the consent agenda. Any additions, changes, deletions?
No.
Okay. Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Moved by Schultz.
Seconded.
Seconded by Trump. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. New business. Presentation on plans and budget for City Hall relocation and approval to release for public bid, and we have Mr. Brian Stark with us tonight.
Yes, thank you.
Welcome, sir.
Yeah, thank you for having me. Those of you that have been on the council, remember me from when I was involved in the fire station project. Those that are new, my name is Brian Stark. I've been a senior project manager for Martin Gardner for, coming up on 25 years now. Guy reached out to me last year about this project, the desire to get City Hall into a city-owned building. It's great use for the project. I think it's going to be a good use for the building. Anytime we can get a building on a downtown, regardless of what it is occupied, it's great for the community, so. We've been working through this fall and this winter on the plans, meeting with the mayor, with Chris, with Guy, and got a design in place, have been working through the budgets, wanted to kind of bring you up to speed on that. We are anticipating, obviously with construction being what it is the last 18 months, we're anticipating a bid date construction of in a range of 240,000 to 276,000 is the range we would anticipate bids coming in. We do have a 10% contingency built into the project that we would encourage the city to carry of 24,000. That is, we're on for scenes. I talked with Chris a little bit before the meeting. On a project of this type, it's fairly simple renovation, but it is still renovation. I am going to write in a $5,000 allowance to the project that any minor unforeseen's come up that may be time-sensitive, between the three of us, or the four, the three city personnel and myself, we can sit down, have a quick conversation, agree with the contractor that, yep, that's an appropriate change if it's a minor amount, they can basically pull from their allowance in the project that would not have to come to council unless we deem it something that is important enough that should come to council. At the end of the project, any of those funds that aren't expended, go back, and change order will be written back to the city for anything that would be not expended. It's pretty typical on a renovation project that we do do a small allowance in there just to help expedite things, especially with the timeframe we're wanting to do. Anticipate construction on this project being about four months at max, so. We've been getting a lot of good responses to all of our bid projects right now. Contractors are hungry, so that's good. So we're looking at basically a design budget or a construction-related budget of 300,000 with contingencies and everything in place, so. As far as kind of an anticipated schedule, I kind of laid out, your guys' next meeting is February 9th, correct? So we would release plans on this upcoming Monday. I'll finalize my final review with the consultants tomorrow, wrap up doing specifications, getting all the technical stuff, get Justin to type all that stuff and make it look pretty and readable for our contractors, and release those plans on Monday. Those will go to Rapids Reproductions to see Rapids. Like all of our projects, we sent out a giant email blast to some 3,000 contractors and suppliers that are on our email list to notify the contractors if the project is out. Plans will then also be hosted on Rapids Reproductions' website for anybody to view, and then they can order the plans directly from them if they do wish so. The pre-bid, I've tentatively slated for Tuesday, January 31st. Bid opening on February 6th, probably mid-afternoon here in City Hall. That gives me a few days to review bids, contact apparent low bidders, ask questions and stuff, and then present the bids to council on the 9th, so.
Where do we land with the awning? Because I didn't do...
So we are going with a prefabricated awning. It's very appropriate for a downtown building. It is probably about a $4,000 cost savings over what we presented before. Since we talked last, I finally got an answer on the siding I really wanted to use. It was a very vague answer from the manufacturer, maybe three to four months to get that siding. So I have made the executive decision. I actually met with another supplier this last Monday on a very similar product. Visually, it looks the same. It's got a 30-year finish warranty. It allows us to do some of the design things we're looking at with the building, add a 35% to 40% cost savings for the materials on top of it. So to me, that was a great savings, so I'm going to approach, that is the basis of design for the siding product. It's still horizontal siding. We can still do wood grain look. We can still do solid colors. We can kind of do some things with the design intent like we've talked about, and I think it'll look very appropriate. Otherwise, everything else we've discussed, mechanical, electrical, plumbing design, they're about 99% as of this morning. Just wrapping up a few little things, just verifying light fixture types, colors, things like that, just the last little tidbit items we have to work through with them, and they'll be ready to go on Monday also.
Perfect. And we have in the plan to put the beam in so we can eliminate the post.
Yep, that actually worked out very well. The existing wood beam does not have to be removed. We actually are going to do sandwich steel on both sides of it and relocate the columns. So that worked out very well, too. So it ends up being a lot less of a hassle for the contractors to do temporary shoring, removing the beam, dealing with the existing walls. We can sandwich a steel L-channel on both sides of it, bolt it through, and anchor it to the new column location, so that worked out really great, too.
Awesome.
Thank you. As far as electrical items, we're prepping the building for generation. We're not going to generate, but we'll have it prepped, so if the addition of the generator in the future...
The generator's there.
Oh, sorry, the generator's there, yeah, so, yeah, so the working with, oh, yeah, that's right, working in confines with that to make sure that that can be done, so. Currently, that generator is on LP, I believe, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so working in the confines with that.
If we can convert it to natural gas, that'd be great. Get rid of that tank, but if we can't, that's...
Yeah, so we're working in the confines of that, simplifying it. The north half of the building, we're really not doing a lot of that. Guy didn't have any huge hopes, dreams, desires of having anything in there. Just cleaning up the electrical is the biggest thing, getting the service off the front of the building, just so it's more presentable to the downtown, so.
Any questions for Brian?
That guy that's in there and take that pole down, too, right?
Yeah, the pole, the pole that's out front won't come down. Well, no, the pole out front has to stay to get to give the service to the back of the building, but the one that has the siren on it?
Right.
That one, we got to have, I'm going to check with Alliance, and Alliance got to disconnect the power because we don't actually pay for the power for the siren, they provide it, so I'll have to remove the power. I'm hoping they can set that siren on the ground when they're there taking the, and then I can deal with the pole after that, so.
And Brian said he wanted it, so he's going to haul it right forward.
I'm trying to find a home for it.
Take the siren?
Yeah.
I was just kidding.
Just the pole.
Oh, I meant the siren, no.
I'll take it.
Go right to the scrap here.
Well, certainly, I'm exactly, put a free sign on it and see how long it'll last. It'll be gone in a hurry, so.
Doorbell.
That's easy. Perfect.
Perfect. So our next item is public hearing. Do you need anything before we move on to that?
No, like I said, all just my comment on the public hearing action is obviously with any city entity prior to taking any action on a public bid, you're obligated to have a public hearing to notify the public, give them opportunity to discuss it, so I would request that the public hearing date be set at the February 9th meeting, and then we will take action on, potential action on the bids as the next line item for that. We take care of the writing up the advertisements for bids and the notice of public hearing. I'll get that to Chris. Typical publishing, how you typically publish everything, in the paper, posted on your website. We take care of the rest of the publishing requirements that are required by the state, so.
Perfect. And I just want to be clear with this group. You mentioned bid opening on February 2nd. That does not have to be published as a public hearing or...
Correct, yeah, that does not have to be anything. It's just basically, we set a bid date and time of the February 6th, and it's just, that's the date, that's the time it is due. And it's just, that's the date, that's the time it is due. We just request a half an hour to have it here in the City Hall. I'll open the bids publicly, read them aloud and dismiss the contractors at that point, so.
And we may put out an agenda, just so it's. Yep, we can have, have it publicly here. You are all welcome.
Yep.
But council will not be convened at that time, so. No questions on the presentation? We will move to set a public hearing on the planned specification and budget for the City Hall relocation project. That we would be looking at, I'm just gonna verify. Thursday, February 9th at 7:00 PM.
Are you seeking motion?
I am.
So, move.
Moved by Schultz. Seconded by Myers. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Excellent, thank you very much. We will get these things out to the contractors on Monday.
Let us know if you need anything in the meantime.
Alright, I'm probably having some interior design discussions with you in the meantime, so.
Perfect. I've been looking.
Alright, sounds good.
It's getting real.
Alright, thanks.
Thanks, Brian. Alright, item C, discuss right-of-way, East Second Street.
This conversation came up due to the new business being built on Main Avenue. If you look up at the map here, the area we're talking about is this area. It is basically the extension of Second Street. That is all city property. That is all right-of-way. It would not be considered an alley. There's obviously no street there currently. And so, the property owner to the south is building the new business. Has requested that, you know, something be done there because he's gonna need access to his building from not just Main Avenue. Due to the nature of the business, he's gonna be unloading trucks occasionally. And it makes a lot more sense to have access to the north side. And his main entries to the shop part of the building are gonna be on the north side of the building. And so, which is all very understandable. The residents on the north have been parking their vehicles, as you can see, in the right-of-way for years. And I have stopped by and visited with them and requested that they start making plans to try and park on their property or at least out of the center of the right-of-way, which they weren't very happy about, but have now started to comply. They're starting to understand there's something happening there and that they're gonna have to adjust a little bit, which is fine. The main reason for this discussion is the council's vision for what should happen on that stretch. It is our property, the city's property. And there is a new business going in next to it. And I don't know that there'll ever be anything to connect to east of that right-of-way because that's all floodplain in the pasture. But on the flip side, both property owners adjacent to that right-of-way kind of relying on it to... There is no driveway for the property on the north, so to speak, to get onto their property. They've been using the right-of-way to get to their property for years now. Same with the property on the south. They have cut in a driveway for the new business. But again, as I stated, he needs to be able to unload trucks, et cetera. So, I guess my suggestion, and not that we need to act on it right now, but my, because the weather's not fit for it, would be to basically make a 24-foot wide gravel, so to speak, road or street through the center of that right-of-way. It's not gonna see very much traffic. Should be relatively easy to maintain. If in some future scenario that we want to pave that, if we do it right with the rock, I'm talking about removing some soil, putting a good amount of subbase in and rock. Basically, we'd be ready to pave it if that scenario ever came to fruition and we felt like we needed it for something else. We could leave it as is. The property owner to the south has already placed some rock at his expense on our right-of-way to be able to get trucks in and out for the construction process. To not basically drag mud up on the street, which is awesome that he thought ahead of that. He doesn't wanna be that guy with the new business that's got the main avenue covered with mud from delivery trucks. So, I guess it's the council's decision on how you want to proceed with that stretch. If we want to utilize our property in that manner or leave it as is and let the residents next to it deal with it. It's a little different situation than a couple of areas of town that are, that have easements behind their property. Cause those are just that easements. They're not meant to be driven on. They're not meant to be utilized that way. It is a full 60-foot right-of-way. It's not an alley. You couldn't classify it as an alley. So, that's what I have for you, I guess.
Could a person seal coat that guy?
Oh, we probably could, yeah. You'd wanna let it get packed in and so it wasn't moving again, moving anymore before you put a seal coat layer on it. And again, it's not gonna have traffic, it's not gonna have high-speed traffic on it. There's no way they can get up to speed. I don't see it being a dust issue, really. If we put a, more or less a foot of rock in eight inches or so of a base rock and four inches of, of a, you know, driveway-type rock, then both parties would be happy. We'd have minimal maintenance, really. I mean, just keeping the snow off it like we would any other street. But we also could do nothing. We could also leave it as is and just, you know, that's another option too.
Well, I was looking at the map. It is the exact same shape and size as the piece between City Hall and our other businesses. With the business going into the south, and we've also heard, I don't wanna call them complaints, but opinions that we need more parking. Is it an opportunity to, I'm also just gonna be honest. Both of those property owners have ample road frontage that they're not entitled to that as the access to their property. You know, is there an opportunity for us to pave it, whether it be seal coat or concrete, and make additional parking? So, it would be diagonal parking, much like outside of City Hall. Removes any contention around the property between the two owners. And it does set us up for future development, gives us a place to push snow. I know we have to pile snow in certain areas now. And so, that would give us one more outlet if we had a big storm. Utilize that space that way as well, so that.
Plus, I don't know, with the ground getting wet and stuff like that and the size of the vehicles he might be working on, coming in and out, the weight of those on gravel. You know, I would just be concerned about it getting all rutted up and difficult for neighbors to the north to use. Trying to get over.
You're talking 60-foot, the width of that right-of-way, 60-foot to either gravel or paved? Is that what you're thinking?
I would, my thought was to pave it, put in curb and make it parking. So that it would essentially, if we ever did extend, I know that's floodplain, but we just, you never know, you never know what's gonna happen.
Well, floodplain can contain a roadway, you just can't build a building on it, you know?
Right, but as far as development, there's not probably gonna be much development over there, but baseball diamonds. I mean, you just never know. We never know what direction we're going. And so, that sets us up to then have two points of access. Cause we would have the street that comes between City Hall and Gibbys today. And then that would be the Second Street access. Those are the only two accesses to that property.
Well, and there is still, I mean, I bring it up every time I see him. I still have been in contact with the Ross and family about possibly selling us a strip of that pasture to connect those two. And if we did that, if that ever came to fruition, then you'd be set up to access it from both directions. And we could change the parking direction out here and make it a two-way. Or we could make the entire loop a one-way and keep the parking all going in the same direction like it is. Either way, it doesn't matter. You'd be able to loop around and, you know. But if we did purchase that strip of land, it'd take some filter and you'd have to gravel that to have, make it usable or get it sodded in really good shade before you let anybody out there on it, you know?
I don't know, I think for right now, why don't we take a gravel? You don't dig out enough for 24-foot or whatever.
Just to get some access.
So, he can go ahead and start his business. And that'll give us some time to think about these other projects. Cause we're not gonna wanna do anything right away anyway. And that way then, he would have some way of getting in and out of there without turning up the street and all that.
And the same with the residents to the north. They'll be able to get deeper into their property. Cause they generally were parking it on the high spot, not very far in, to stay off of the lawn, et cetera. So, but if we gravel that center stretch a little bit, then I'll just grab some quotes for next meeting. I mean, the weather's not really conducive to doing that kind of work right now. So, I'll, I'll get a quote on, you know, coring out a little bit and getting a gravel stretch. Maybe not even all the way to the back fence, maybe partially, just so he can get in and out. He's already put a little gravel between his building site and the entrance to that right-of-way because he might have trucks coming in the next two weeks, so.
Well, we wanna be a good neighbor.
Where's that sit, Guy, where's that sit with the drainage?
The drainage runs, you can almost see it. The drainage runs basically on the property line.
Oh, okay.
That's where it used to daylight is right there, that dark spot.
So, he'll be dragging over top of that.
Yeah, but we tubed all that, remember?
Yeah.
And then, so it's, but his elevation of his building has got a couple of feet of fill over top of that pipe now.
Oh, okay.
So, it's not like just three inches below the surface. It's, it's under about three feet of fill.
At one time, he was talking to me about putting like a retaining wall there on the north side of his.
I was thinking that was on the east side of the building.
Well, I was thinking, well, I understood it on the north side. I don't know if that's what he's still planning or.
No, I think that's changed because his, his main entry door is gonna be on the north side.
Okay, I didn't realize that.
Yeah. The wall he's thinking about making, I think might be on the east side and extend past the building on the north, to the north a little bit. But that's the last I heard from him anyway, was, that's what he was hoping to do. Yeah, no problem. I can get some quotes on getting at least inadequate gravel dry for now. And that again, should make us a good base for painting if that's what we choose to do, so.
Alright, sounds good. 15D, discuss interest-earned investments dispositioning. This is toward our book.
Yeah, currently writing well with this last, last statement that we had, we gained 1,724 in interest. So, currently, we're pulling in quite a bit of interest that we have. My question is, do you think that it'll be worthwhile for me to go and start having that conversation about possibly investing this money that we're getting in interest and additional, whatever we wanna do, or just the interest either way into some sort of an investment fund that we could then pull from when we need to buy some land instead of pulling out a loan? You know, we're talking to CD. CDs right now, they're, you know, anywhere between 4/6 and they're compound quarterly. You know, there's lots of different options that we could look into. Just wanna get your opinions on whether or not it would be worthwhile for me to do that or if you just wanna let it sit there and just gain interest. Your call.
So, you'd basically take any additional interest and put it, funnel it into a fund then?
Funnel it into a fund that we put money in already, yeah. And then later use that to pull out money, like we're looking at, if we did it three years from now when our, one of our funds come up, and we could then use that to help fund whatever new project that we were doing.
You want something that you could easily get the money out?
That you could easily get the money out and could help stave off taking a significant loan to do the same thing. Whether it's Main Street, you know, something else, or whatever you wanna do.
But you're kinda thinking probably CDs?
Something that would, that would gain over time. I think that, you know, we could even, I mean, right now, they're running a year and a half, they're still getting good interest rates. If you had three years, I can't imagine we'd be able to get on something like that, so.
CDs probably the easiest thing to handle.
It's the safest way to handle it.
And if you stagger.
And there's zero risk. Well, here's the other thing, interest rates aren't done going up, so I wouldn't go long-term, actually. I'd go short, you can always renew. So, I wouldn't do anything over 12 months, if that. The Fed has indicated they're not done.
Well, and if you stagger, if you, you know, once a month, you put something in and.
We only have so much to work with.
Right.
Yeah, but it makes a difference, so.
Okay. Alright, then that's all I needed. I just go ahead and I'll start doing the research and talking to the bank and seeing what kind of deals I can wrangle up. And then I'll come back with, what number do we wanna put in?
And because that's interest, we don't have to, you know, don't have to necessarily worry about maintaining connection to a fund correctly. Much like if tax money comes in or water bill money comes in, it has to stay within the water fund. Because this is.
Right.
Organically earned.
Right.
We can kind of do what we, what we can with.
And, and that's why I'm suggesting it because it's literally just being pumped back into the general fund. And this would just make it very simple, not in the form of accounting terms, but it would just be really simple to actually invest it into something that would be worthwhile. So, I, my opinion, I think it's a great idea to do. Like I said, especially if you wanna fund something down the road.
I just wanna be clear about why it's an option to do with this monies versus, we don't normally do this with any other monies, so. Alright, so you do need anything from us tonight or you're gonna do more research?
I'm gonna just need to go ahead and say, yes, you can start researching it, so.
Perfect, I think you got that? Alright, discuss purchase of two new radar signs. This was actually one of my wishlist items when Chris asked for budget. And then I got the good news that we've got funds to get this done this year. So, doesn't necessarily have to wait until next fiscal year and next budget. You do have a quote in your packet for two additional radar signs. They make a big difference. I do, I watch, you know, if I'm out walking the dog, wherever that sign is, it starts flashing, you see brake lights. I mean, the people are responding. We now have, I did see it out today, which is awesome. So, we've got a stand that we can make the sign mobile. The reason that took a little time is because you have to have a speed limit sign posted in addition to the sign. Because we have several trouble areas around the school. It's not just one. There's four or five different outlets they use coming in and out that the students are, may need a reminder what the speed limit is. And so, it'd be nice to have that portable and moving around. So, I would, we bought one just to see how well it worked. I think it'd be worth investing in one or two more so that we can have them on the edges of town and have one that kind of moves around. But open to council. So, the quote looks like if we do with the universal brackets and the software so that we can get the reporting out, we are looking at 6,830. I know we bought additional brackets with the one that we have, so is it, would it, is it still behoove us to get an extra?
Yeah, we used the last bracket that we had on that portable sign. So, if we've got, we should, well, we should probably have at least, you know what? Now that you mention that, I probably should call him. I can't remember if each sign came with a bracket.
This says additional, so.
Yeah, see, and I said that to him when I asked for the quote because I had in my head that we had to. But now that I think about it, I think each sign, the sign comes with one bracket.
Yeah, it does say universal. Yes, it does say universal go bracket mount.
Okay, so that means you can take off the, the extra bracket.
Yep, $100 for the extra, two sets of brackets.
Correct. Cause we used the last one on the portable. And I really, and right now, I'm not thinking there's any other pole we would probably put another bracket on, but we're gonna have two more brackets to use with the signs. So, if we find another location where we want a permanent mount bracket, we'll have them. And we bought the extra batteries when we bought the first one. So, as long as we stagger the deployment of the signs, we don't need any more extra batteries. They only take a day to charge and the signs generally last almost a month. So, we don't need any extra batteries either. I can't think of any other accessories we would need for the signs. Just for budgetary reasons, given what we have coming up with you leaving, possibly having another person to overlap and pay at the same time. Is this, does this come out of the same pool of money? Okay, so if it's. Okay, so if it's if it's separate, that was my only hesitation.
No, that's uh that's part of the budget talks, but as far as funding, no, we got it, so that's that's not a issue of that.
Okay.
Do we have enough data that really shows how how this has changed traffic patterns from when we s-? I mean, I know you had a little difficulty early on about keeping, you know, you whatever. But you look from one date to now that we're seeing that it actually is slowing people down quite a bit on certain areas?
The beautiful part about um having more signs so that you can let one go dark is the sign has what's called stealth mode. Meaning it's not gonna light up, but it's still gonna record people's speed. So if we take a sign, because we have two other ones operating in other parts of town and put it in stealth mode, that's when we're really gonna get the numbers. To know how much it's helping, because if you have one on a stretch for a battery run with it working. And then same stretch for the same period of time, whatever it is, doesn't have to be a battery run, and put it in stealth mode, then you'll really know what the difference is. We, I haven't done that because it's the day that that thing quits working, somebody says, hey, your batteries are dead. Cause now they know, you know, your sign isn't working, so I haven't done that, you know? And there's more, there's so much more we can do with reports than what what I've shown Mayor Sarazin as far as picking out problems, you know? And I just haven't been able to take the time to sit down and really work with that. I plan to, cause I'm gonna need to explain, even if we stick with the one sign, I'm gonna need to explain that to the next person, so. There's there's a ton of information comes from that software, but that stealth mode I would love to play with and know. I think I might even be able to set it up where it's on stealth one day and regular the next day and just alternate back and forth, so.
I think having additional, one additional one is easy to justify, two, I'm not so sure about.
So you're thinking, cause we already have one, right? So what, just be like North Town and South Town?
Yeah, I mean, we've got brackets set up both directions on Roosevelt. So we've got um northbound coming into town from the south and southbound coming into town from the from the north. Um, and we'll have two more brackets, so if we wanted to get one going, Burnet Station's not a thing, because you got the two curves and you got the railroad tracks, right? And then as soon as you clear them, you're out to the bigger speed limit anyway. So if we mounted the two new brackets, um go in the opposite direction on the north and south side of towns, we'd have all three main entrances covered both directions. So what we've been doing is wait till the batteries die, put it in a new location. So it's on Roosevelt Street for three weeks to a month, then it's on Albernet Road, three weeks to a month, then it's on the north side, you know? But with at two signs in that capacity, you're gonna have more coverage so to speak. And then the third one being on the portable, I think would be kinda huge, cause we made the brackets so that you can just drive up to it with a skid loader, pick it up and move it. And made it heavy enough that two teenagers are not gonna pick that up and throw it in the back of their of their truck, you know? So and if they run over it, they're gonna hurt their vehicle pretty badly. So I feel like it's kinda safe, you know, to have set out. But yeah, we've we've heard complaints of people on Willow Street, on Third Avenue, on Moonheart Street.
Even down Longworth.
Even down Longworth, so.
Everybody seems to think they help.
I I mean, I know when I'm driving, no matter what town I'm in, when I see one, it makes me hit the brakes, you kinda coast, you know? Otherwise, you kinda coast, but.
I wish you know the sign like I do, like.
I just need to be better in my downloading of the data, um making sure we're marking what street. That that I failed on early on, not marking which street it was on when we when we gathered this data. And I have started a a Google Sheets file like what your agenda is on with this data, so it'd be available to any of you if you wanted. If you wanna make, if you want some kinda more specific report, you just have to let me know, cause I've got the software on my computer to make that report. And condense it into whatever it is, you know, whether the top ten percent of the speeds in that zone or what is, you know? And we're getting the other thing too, and I don't know if it'll ever become a thing, but you get a traffic count. It's counting how many cars are coming by that sign every day, no matter whether they're speeding or not. And who knows if someday DOT might have a grant and say, well, we'll help you pay that, but we need a traffic count. Maybe that would be sufficient, don't know, don't know if it'll ever happen, but that part is kinda cool too, to know how many cars are actually entering town in this period of time. No matter how fast they're going, so.
Is there a spot by the school where it would be beneficial to sample?
Well, that's where the portable would go, because we'd have to invest so much in speed limit signs, cause we don't have it posted around town, because it's implied it's twenty-five. And if you have the digital up, you have to have a posted speed limit, so that's why we put it on the the portable, so we can just move that around and just have the one uh speed limit sign.
What funds are this commutative?
I can pull it out of either the loss funds, or I can pull it out of uh the capital improvement funds, because it actually fits within the capital improvement side. I mean, either one.
Which we've got plenty of loss, right?
We have half a million. We have to start spending it.
I don't see, personally, I don't see a reason why we don't get two.
So should we just do two then, I mean, can we just?
I I don't know, I don't know if we have it.
I think you can afford it. Put one on Donald Drive.
I'd like to say guys, if you drive the vehicle, go down there pretty quick these days.
Well, once we get it in a format, it'll, I mean, we can make the data do its thing on its own, so it's just a matter of downloading and um, yeah. Make us a better partner with the sheriff, get more out of that contract if we can kinda help them pinpoint when we've got issues, so.
Yeah, we could always tell them, oh, we need some patrolers on this street at this time or whatever.
Had somebody going to South of Town last night, driving in, he had somebody that he was visiting with on the side of the road.
I'm gonna make a motion.
By one motion?
I'll make a motion and we purchase two speed traffic signs for six thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars from company.
Radar sign?
Radar sign company.
Motion by Bozenberg. Second by Trum, any further discussion?
Do we need to get an updated uh quote, since we can only put brackets, or do we need to put this bracket?
No, I would don't need, yeah, we just strike it, so if your motion for the full amount, it'll just come in less and that's okay.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries. Fifteen F, discuss the fee charge for accepting credit card as payment for utilities. So this is something that when we switched to QuickBooks, uh we were excited about, cause it opens up that possibility. And I do, as I understand it, we've we've had a test run, we we ran a pilot on being able to accept a credit card. So I'll let Chris speak to how that went, um what this looks like for the future, and then what those charges could be.
Yeah, so basically I had three people that were running behind and needed to pay their bill. And so they came in and asked, can you, can I use credit card? And I said, as long as you're willing to be the guinea pig to find out what the charge would be. So the first one went through and it came out about three eight point eight percent, second one same way. So at that point I knew that that was basically what we're gonna get charged on the other end. And QuickBooks allows me to do a quick feature where um to memorize transaction, where it allows me to actually put that transaction straight into the customer's um profile. So then I just basically hit a button, it goes in there, they're charged the amount at three point eight. And then that's what they they're paying right then and there on that credit card. That goes in within about two days and then it goes straight into our general fund at that point, okay, for the for the water payment. It does come in as a separate transaction, so I do have to notate it individually when I'm when I'm doing the books. But other than that, it's pretty slick, the people liked it. Um, they didn't care about having to pay the extra fee because they were getting their, you know, they were getting their ten dollar charge they would normally get. The only decision that I really need to know now um is, I don't think this is gonna happen that often, just so you know. I mean, we're talking three people out of two months.
Oh, but we we haven't exactly offered it, I think you'd be surprised.
I think you'd be surprised, but um the the question is, do we do a flat fee of four dollars? There are advantages to doing that, you know, because of the fact that it's just four dollars and most people's bills will follow that radius. Um, or do we do the the three point eight percent, which is gonna be the exact number that it comes in at? But there might be surrounding issues, so you're gonna lose a tenth of a penny here and there.
Is this something, do you need a point of sale terminal?
No.
Is there something we put on our website, or are you just, how how are you today entering that?
Right now it has, when I go to put credit card, it I click the button, it says Visa, Mastercard, so those are the only ones we're accepting right now. And then um at that point, it says, it goes through, do you have authorization either via over the phone or in person? So I do have to have that authorization. If they're standing there, when I get done, it prints off a transaction sheet, one for me and then one for them to sign. So they automatically get that piece of paper to take with them that says I paid it, and oh, that's good. So that's kinda how the process works as far as what that looks like. Um, if it's over the phone, similar, it just asks me, it has a section that says, I'm talking to this person right now over the phone, I have to click that. Then that prints out something that I can send to them.
So if I remember correctly, when we did the training with QuickBooks or QuickBooks, there are add-in modules. So we could, we could purchase something that then lives on our website that they can self-transact, is that?
Correct, that would be the the next step or the next generation would be to have this. Has a pay now button that they would be able to pay on our website if they wanted to make a credit card transaction, I think.
So do we pause this a little bit and at least start looking at what those look like in case those carry their own fee?
That's absolutely what we can do.
There may be an additional to use that kinda service.
Question with that, am I still allowed to take credit card payments until that's decided?
Fair enough, we can take action tonight, it's on the agenda, but I would ask that we also look at how to get it as a self-service option.
Absolutely, that's.
I do know our current web host has commerce platforms, uh they do charge a fee, uh I think it's one and a half percent, I mean, it's pretty low. So um there are others out there, but.
Right.
That would be my follow-up ask.
And I was gonna say, does it have to be e-commerce on our site, or can we offer a portal to?
I think it's gotta be a QuickBooks add-in, as long as it works with QuickBooks, then we're good.
Well, or it could be something straight through GoDaddy, right, that it's just on there and that just goes to our bank?
Yes.
As a transaction, so that does not have to be in QuickBooks, because then what happens is when that that transaction goes in, it'll show up as um just like this does, as an Intuit payment or a GoDaddy payment. And then I just have to just transfer that over. The only caveat to this is, how am I gonna know whose account paid what?
Okay, I think you can make them notate their account, and then they can report.
As long as there's a report, yeah, as long as there's a report, then we don't have to have it go through QuickBooks, because you might be getting double charge if you have to go through QuickBooks in that situation.
Okay.
It would almost be better to have it go straight to the account.
So that you separate it out between water and sewer, man.
No, it's total bill.
It's total bill, total bill.
But don't you credit water with X number of dollars?
Well, it's still just paying the bill, it's no different than you walk in and wrote a check for your entire bill.
Right.
He's splitting it in the in another part of the software.
Yeah.
That's a different issue, I guess.
Yeah.
Which one is easiest for you?
I think that's when you just hit the nail on the head, we're gonna have to explore, like right now I've got the QuickBooks sign set up. I need to see what a pay now button looks like, and I can actually talk to Connie a little bit to see how they set theirs up. Um, but that would be a different beast by itself, cause then we'd have to have people test it, some giddy things, and then see how that works from that point.
Do you need a decision from them on the percentage versus the flat tonight?
Really, well, okay, so how about this, since we're going to wait, is what I'm hearing?
No, I'm I'm good, if you wanna accept the way it is, I'm saying let's also look at a a self-serve option, I think, Joe, did you have a question?
Well, walk me through this, so if I wanna pay online, pay mine with a credit card, if we go through basically GoDaddy? How's that work? I mean, I understand how to pay bills, but what, do I go to our our website for Albernet?
Yes.
And click pay it, and it comes out of my credit card, I could have that preset up and just pay that amount?
I don't think you can preset it up, you would have to transact every time. So you would receive your bill, if you want it preset up, that's ACH, we already do that.
Yeah.
If you, but you'll receive your bill and then you can take that, much like I do for any of my insurance, and then I go pay my bill.
Pay this on this date or this amount?
The 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 thing to think about here too is, and that's a great point, the ACH doesn't cost the user anything, yeah.
That's easy.
Yeah, so.
And I think.
And we'll maintain that option, that's not going.
And that that's gonna be an option, but this just gives our community more options, more avenues. If I can get these delinquents down to where, if that's the way they can pay, great.
Well, cause one of them, he told me they they stopped in and they didn't have any more checks, and they forgot to order checks and they needed checks. So this was a great solution for something like that, um so. And everyone manages their money differently, so whatever works, we would love to meet people where they are. So for now, you have the ability to accept credit cards. There is a fee, so with the QuickBook, current QuickBooks option, council preference on the three point eight percent that just comes through when he runs it, or do we do a flat fee and then that leaves, how does that then?
In some cases there'd be an overage that just goes into the general fund, and in some cases it'll be right, I mean, I calculated.
When you put through the transaction, do you choose whether it's the percent or flat fee?
Uh, no, what I do is I actually put the number in, so that's what I'm saying. So if it's it's a memorized transaction, so it's either it's gonna be three point eight or it's gonna be four dollars. Either way, with the four dollars, you're you're, it's unless they have a five hundred dollar bill, you're never gonna lose on that. But the other one, you, in rare situations, might be off rounding wise in a couple cents or a tenth of a cent here and there. Anything's gonna kill us, yeah, just saying.
It's a little more transparent if you just go with the three point eight.
Yeah, cause someone who's really watching their bill and sixty dollars every month would say, well, you know, that's that's a big percentage. But by the same token, our water bill's almost always over a hundred, so we'd be landing. Probably two, two weeks.
So what I'm hearing is the three point eight percent.
You need a motion on that?
I do.
Yeah.
So moved three point eight percent on uh credit card transactions to pay utilities.
Moved by Myers? Second by Bozenberg, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay, motion carries. Alright, discuss forming city personnel committee, so um I asked Chris to put this on here, I I didn't wanna call Guy leaving an opportunity, that's, please, this is gonna come up really, um, I would like to use this opportunity to evaluate our current job descriptions, pay scales, the pay scales that we have. Um, A, they're several years old and much has happened, and B, you know, they were brought with from the former mayor as a proposal. We didn't usually, didn't really make a lot of changes to them, so I think we have an opportunity to do a review there. And really just look at how we're structuring the work across the city, um and what what the responsibilities are. Look, we've got, we've had increased responsibilities, so I'd I'd like to have a committee just sit down, look at all the duties, responsibilities, make sure we're we're handling them, that we're structured the way we need to as far as the personnel that we have, so. I will lead that, but I would love two volunteers to help me out. Uh, I would like to, so we, January's gonna be busy with budget, and so I would expect us to begin meeting in February and like to have. expect us to begin meeting in February and like to have a proposal back to council by the March meeting, is my timeline on that.
All of them.
Myers and Trump, perfect, appreciate you both. Okay, discuss Hiawatha fire truck purchase, so I don't know who found it, but we got fortunate, and it was in the chief's report, that, as you all know, Trump 135 went down. We had met with the township, me being city staff, as well as Councilor Trump, met with the township to kinda discuss options to replace 135. Both ourselves and them are not currently in a position to fund a, a brand-new truck. We were looking at options to go with something that maybe wasn't fire apparatus. In the meantime, we became aware of a, it is a pumper, I believe, out of Hiawatha. It's a nineteen eighty-nine, so it's, it's not new, but they are a full-time department, so they, everything's housed inside, well-maintained. And it, they are asking seventy-five hundred for this particular.
How many gallons?
How many gallons is it?
Seven.
It's only seven fifty.
Seven fifty, yeah. Which brings us above three thousand gallons then, so that does sound, or twenty-five hundred?
It seats five, right?
Yeah.
Seventy-five gallons? But it's a pumper.
It's a pumper, and it seats five people, that's kind of one of the big things is, you can actually fit and go down the road with five people. So it becomes that response vehicle, so to speak, more so than a water carrier.
So go with the mutual aid, you're having one truck that can go out and have five people in it, as opposed to all three trucks are there and we have nothing left in the city, which is never.
Does this mean we're gonna need another water truck eventually, or are you still?
Oh, I think it's a, I personally think it's a bridge truck.
It's a bridge, yes.
It's a bridge to what they really need.
So that's what I was gonna say, the, Hiawatha's bringing this truck out tomorrow, and the fire department's gonna take a look. My opinion is, as a city, we have all the equipment we need. This would be a mutual aid township response vehicle, so I would like to have a discussion with them. I do know that they were looking for similar vehicles after we had our meeting, they were doing some of their own independent research and sending us some, some options they had found, and so I, I would hope they'd be open to looking into it. The reason I wanted to leave it on our agenda tonight, and again, the fire department's gonna all get a chance to touch and feel it and, and wage their opinions, is there's potential that we may call a special meeting if the township's not going to fund it and it's still something we would like to move ahead with. So I just wanted to be as transparent as possible, I don't need action from this crew tonight, but we may see a special meeting come up. We do know Hiawatha prefers to sell to another department, they don't wanna go to public bid, they would like to keep it local, which is, which is very nice, so.
But if the township doesn't want to, do it to what you want it to be?
Right, yeah, if the township is, as a city, we don't necessarily need it, so I would hope with the price tag that's on it, it's seventy-five hundred dollars, that the township would be able to, to fund that, so it is a conversation I need to have yet.
If we had this in like a mutual aid, would we just send that vehicle, or would we need, or would we send all the vehicles, or how's that?
I think it depends on the response, and I mean, I can, I can let you guys speak to that, but.
Depends on the haul.
Yeah, but in some cases, that could be the only vehicle.
Yeah, well, like, for example, they had a mutual aid in Central City over the weekend, it was on city water, so they didn't need water, they needed, they needed hands, so that, yes, that would've sent.
Five people in the truck, yeah.
But if we're talking about a rural response?
That's different.
It's gonna have to be the truck that's carrying the portable tank.
Yeah.
But that means we gotta carry water out, because on the rural area, you're not gonna have water, so we gotta carry water out.
And how, how many people does that vehicle carry?
Which one?
The one that has a tanker, the portable thing on it.
Right now, the portable tank is on 134, and that is gonna be a max of three people.
So you would move the portable tank onto this thing?
No.
So that truck goes out to a rural fire.
You know, it's, township people invited tomorrow to look at the truck.
Well, Ron's part of the township.
Yeah, Ron's trustee, he's the trustee.
Should be his job to get his people there.
That would, it would, and he's the one that found the truck, so that came down through Eric.
And I, it'll be here through Monday, through their meeting, they get, they get to keep it all weekend to look at it, et cetera, and I will check it out too from a standpoint, so, and Bill Valka, who is a diesel mechanic, part of the fire station, will obviously be looking at it too, so.
There were, I know there are a couple things that would need to have repairs done on it that Hiawatha was holding off on because they were taking it out of service.
I think Ron said they fixed a couple of the things, so, we'll find that out.
Yeah.
And they were all pretty minor, from what I understand.
Yeah, that was correct, and I think that they were gonna go ahead and fix it if we were gonna do it.
So it could be ready to run and shows up here.
And the diesel also, right?
Pardon me?
It's a diesel, it's not a gas, like?
Yeah, it's a diesel.
Yeah, because.
And the only.
I figured.
The only issue with that is, and Bill Valka brought this up when we talked on the phone, it's a Detroit, and in that age frame, it could be an old two-stroke Diesel because they were still making those in nineteen eighty-nine, or it could be the series that they jumped to. That kinda throws a wrench in it, if it's an old, the old two-stroke Diesel, Detroit, that might be shooting yourself in the foot, 'cause there isn't almost a mechanic left alive that works on those anymore. 'Cause once Detroit quit making that, their two-stroke, that was the end of it. There's been no other ones like that manufactured since, so I guess we'll find that out when we see it. So, I tried to stop the one day and they were out on a call, and the other day, I drove by, I didn't have enough time, and it wasn't sitting out at their fire station, so I just got done going, so.
Any other questions on the truck, again, no action tonight, I would like to meet with the township, get their, their take on it, and then, but there may be a special meeting. All right. Discuss continuation of Lynn County Sheriff's contract, so we did get notice, this is something we do every January. Lynn County Sheriff's contract will be renewed for next fiscal year, so this would be starting July one, correct?
Yep.
They did the, their standard one dollar per hour increase year-over-year, that's what we've seen for the last several years. One thing to note is, I did catch that the new contract mentions it has us fill in the hours per week rather than the hours per month. So just keep that in mind as we're, as we're designating how many hours we would like as part of that contract, it is hours per week.
What do we typically do then?
Right now, we're at forty-three hours a month.
Twenty-three, so we're talking twenty.
Ten hours a week.
Ten hours, ten, eleven hours a week.
Eleven will be an increase, ten would be a slight decrease.
We get, we get a hundred anyway, so.
Right, and, yeah. The pleasure of the council on hours per week. And we've, we've seen the dollar increase for several years. Given the new structure change, it could be an opportunity for us to do a little bit of cost control, if we just move to ten hours per week, that brings it down slightly without.
What'd you say we're at now?
Forty-three hours a month.
Which is nine point nine, two hours per week, so I'd go with ten, ten hours.
I mean, they're always putting in more time anyways.
What is, what is it, an hour, they're asking?
Forty dollars now.
Forty.
Forty dollars, no, no, plus thirty-nine.
And for what you pay in a year, you still can't even buy one police car and outfit, and let alone hire the, the police officer?
And the insurance, let alone the insurance, yeah, so. Well, I would seek a motion to approve continuation of the Lynn County Sheriff's contract at ten hours per week. Moved by Schontz, second by Trump, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed nay, motion carries. Discuss cutting down the ash tree, I believe this is next to what will be new city hall.
Yes, Councilman Bozenberg actually has some, found someone who was interested, gave us a quote for nine hundred dollars to take it all the way down to the ground, that's not stump ground, but it's
This is the tree by the sign.
The one that I trimmed up by the sign, and he's very aware that we're worried about the sign, and so he said, no problem, he can get it down. We'll have to deal with the residue of the tree, which is fine, 'cause I've been getting bugged non-stop, what are you gonna do with that wood? Just the pieces that I have, 'cause everybody likes to burn ash, 'cause it's hard. And the little bit of brush that's left on it, we can obviously put in the brush pile, so no concern on my part, that just seems incredibly reasonable to take that big of a tree down all the way to the ground, then we'll deal with stump and spring. Depending on what we wanna do with the property, unless you wanna have us, have them cut it off six foot high and we'll get chainsaws in here or something.
The guy does have insurance coming at us, he's, he's semi-entire.
We'll call him, he, he told me how to get his cert of liability, so we can just call and get cert on hand just in case anything happens.
And he's got an older truck, it's more like a crane-type of style truck, that you can, when he cuts it in chunks, it can lift more weight than a bucket truck. So, it's a little slower, but, but it's, he says it's a lot safer. Using that type of thing, especially, three of them, he can drop towards, towards railroad tracks. Then in chunks, the other three, he's gonna have to cut pieces and lower them down.
Just don't hit the sign. Don't hit the sign.
Young, young, old guy, put a piece of black. Will he be able to do that this winter, or? Oh, yeah, he'll get, all right, he'll get, one of them, he'll get a nice day, I think. He said he got three of those wrenches down to the half eye and they probably.
Especially not someone who's gonna get on it fairly quickly, too, yeah, those two things.
I believe we hire Randy Tree Service to take down the ash tree for nine hundred dollars.
Second by Trump, second by Myers, any further discussion? We do have a subitem to discuss, green space proposal, I would recommend that we just move this into the park committee. So this would just be part of that consideration when we pull back. Is there any other discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor say aye. Opposed nay. Bozenberg abstains. Motion carries. All right, discuss appointment of city clerk treasurer, currently Chris Shelby. This is something, we just recently appointed him as he was hired, however, our city ordinance requires we do it every two years, we almost forgot one year, we nearly forgot one year, so I'm like, you know what? Maybe this just needs to be every January so that we remember, so we've left it on the agenda. Pleasure of council, we're not required to do it, I think it's good practice to just, something, 'cause if we do forget, I think we can get in some pretty big troubles, so. Pleasure of council, if anyone would like to appoint Chris Shelby as our city clerk?
So moved.
Moved by Trump?
Second.
Second by all of them, Bozenberg, I'll give it to him, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed nay, motion carries. Similarly, we are required by city ordinance to appoint our city attorney, we currently use Brian Fagan with the Simmons Perine. He is very thorough, extremely objective, do sometimes have response issues, however, I'm willing to work through that, it is getting better, and that's manageable, but I, we get someone that gives us a good opinion, and I appreciate all that he's done for us. So I would recommend we continue with Mr. Fagan's, I would look for an appointment, Brian Fagan is our city attorney.
So moved.
Moved by Myers.
Second.
Second by Trump, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed nay. All right, designate place for official publications, so currently, the Lynn Newsletter is our official publication, and then we also do postings at Harbor State Bank, the door to city hall because it is twenty-four hour accessible, and the vestibule in the post office. We're not looking to make any changes, just look for a motion to approve continuing those, the official publication as the Lynn Newsletter.
Make motion to, to accept the new, the newsletter, oh, jeez, jeez.
I gotcha.
Official publications to, you have Lynn County Newsletter at the, at the S and B and city hall and post office.
Perfect, motion by Bozenberg.
Second.
Second by West, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed nay, motion carries. I keep looking at your faces and I can't come up with names, it's awful. All right, designate official depository, currently that is Harbor State Bank, we did just recently increase the amount, I think that was just a few months ago, so this is just a formality to go ahead and designate them as our official depository. Moved by Schontz. Second by Trump, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed nay, motion carries. All right, appointments for the planning and zoning committee, we do have three members whose terms are up at the end of January. So that is Brent Williams, Jim Carver, and Josh Hendrickson. We did reach out, I don't know, last I heard, we haven't gotten any responses. However, we can choose to reappoint these individuals, and then they are given the opportunity to accept or decline at that point as well. Or we can wait till February, hear from them, and/or bring new appointments if they're not interested. I think either way, we end up in the same place, so I would recommend we just reappoint these individuals to our planning and zoning, and then the clerk can validate that they accept that position and we can go from there. Moved by Schontz.
Second.
Second by Myers, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed nay, motion carries. Same story, board of adjustments, terms due at the end of January are Cameron Ford, Christina Smith, and Todd Wagner. I would seek a motion to reappoint those three to the board of adjustments.
So moved.
Moved by West, second by Trump, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed nay, that motion carries. Okay, item Q, I don't know if we've ever gone to item Q. Set FY twenty-four MAX property tax levy public hearing, this will be on Thursday, February ninth at seven PM. Let's seek a motion to set that public hearing. Moved by Trump, second by Myers, any discussion? Just for full transparency, we'll do the MAX property tax levy in February, the public hearing for the full budget will then be in March. All those in favor say aye. Opposed nay, motion carries. All right, now I'm gonna make you get your calendars out, I would like to set days and times, I would, I would like to put two budget workshops on the calendar. We've gotten away with one in the last several years, but it is Chris's first go-around, so cut him a little bit of slack. So these will need to be done before, well before our February meeting, 'cause we'll have to use some of that data for that MAX, MAX property tax levy. So how does everybody look, Monday of next week is a holiday. I have EMA on Tuesday, so I won't be able to attend if we do it Tuesday. Wednesday or Thursday of next week, or we look at the week of the twenty-third, how's everybody on Thursday, January nineteenth? Say? Six or seven PM?
Seven.
Seven PM? Chris, does that give you enough time, are you, are you ready for our, ready for us all, both heads?
Yes.
All right. So, Thursday, January nineteenth at seven PM at city hall, does that work for everyone?
I will absolutely, but eight, that's time, but you can make it work here.
All right, so that's, that's number one. And then let's look at the week of the twenty-third for a backup date, I can do any night that week.
I prefer Monday.
You were out Monday, weren't you, Chris?
Uh, I leave early that day, yeah. I'm only gonna be back, if you do it later, I could stop in. If you do it later, I could stop and just. We could, uh, well, so that's the week of, that's not the week of classes, so we could go to the 30th if you want.
What has to be published, though, do we know? Oh, nothing.
Nothing, 'cause.
'Cause it's just the public hearing, then you actually publish the tax levy after the public hearing.
So I actually like the idea of the 30th, because then that gives a little bit of break in there, that if I need to get additional resources, I can do that.
Okay. I could also do any night that week. Monday still work for you, Monday the 30th?
What's the clock? 7?
7 o'clock? That way we don't get confused. All right, backup date, or second date if necessary, would be Monday, January 30th at 7 o'clock, so.
So if you all agree on the 19th, we don't have to.
That's right. All the pressure's on. Don't believe I need a motion for that, unless someone wants to make one. Chris, if you can just make sure we follow up with this group with those dates, I'd appreciate it.
I will get the calendar reminders up till.
Awesome. All right, that's it, we made it. So there's no old business, which I don't think has ever happened, so let's go around. Final comments, I will start with Councilor Trump.
Nice tight meeting, thank you.
Thank you. Myers?